To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. In honor of the silence of said handicapped, retarded, elderly persons in this community, in special honor and silence of the honorable Lloyd Fousey, Sir Bridgell, and people Bridgell and Ash.
Mike Colber, Bruce Oliver, John McFadden, Joe Ryan, Joe Rossman, Jerry Bichin, Kat Aldezia, Colin Dunne, Bruce White, Laura Nolan, Chad King, Bill Chilio, Ian O'Leary.
Would you like to call up Mary Wise, please?
Okay, just me. Good line. I'm gonna pardon her if I have enough. First of all, I would like to just say about the Memorial Day parade, that it was long, it was good, but next year could we get two bands, please? If not, really, I'm boring. And also, we need to encourage organizations like my own, Arlen, to do floats. Instead of having the little kids walk in and having a wonderful... Just suggestions for two or one set. The main problem I'm here about tonight is over at the 1871 railroad station, and about 22 years ago, the cement, concrete, whatever, they put up the railing. And I know that some of you need to go over there and walk it. The borough, the borough is wonderful. They mow our grass, they take care of ice, snow, they salt the sidewalk. They help. The park authority helps us tremendously. Chad King and his men help us. Really, we're very, very fortunate, really fortunate. But we do have a serious railing problem. It is four inches too short to meet new, uh, regulations, laws.
ADA laws.
Yeah, ADA rates. And they are 32 inches, and that will not do. They also are rusting at each main, main pole. Joe, can you describe it better than I?
Yeah, I think, well, I was over there last week, and the county mayor was asking us to stop by to take a look at it, and the, the company post that was going into the concrete is only about two inches. But what, the way this railing is constructed, it's constructed of two huge channels that have been sandwiched together, lapping over each other. So, the water's getting in that joint between the two at the bottom. And that's what has resulted in some of the posts popping the concrete off the face on that overhang portion. So, we were doing some brainstorming over there in order to get the handrail in compliance. It's quite best to replace that handrail and cut back probably about 12, 18 inches on that concrete. The rest of the sidewalk for that ramp is in excellent condition. So, we cut that back, 12, 18 inches, dialaw that, pour a new slab in there, get sleeves in there, get the proper depth in the concrete for the post to be put in place. Now, the question was raised, is there any grant money available to the library? So, I called, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
The 1871, both of us.
So, I, I called Michelle Mostyn's Charlotte's Call and asked them if they would be eligible. And she said, yes, that kind of a project, as an ADA enhancement modification, is eligible. Uh, but the, any grant application that has to be submitted through the borough. So, I think the mayor's asking for the support of the borough to make application to the Charlotte's Call in their next round of funding, which will probably start in August or September. The full application is due in the fall of this year. So, uh...
It's CBG?
It's CBG, right. And I think in general, a lot of times, they're pretty generous on the amount of money that they, they apply towards handicap accessibility items. And maybe we can go for, go for a 100% request.
Okay, absolutely.
You have to add to that, I already have had Frank Exworth and another person come in and look at it. And the cheapest, we caught it with 18, is probably $1,000, which is our annual budget. So, and it is, I think, probably recommended that we put up signs, "Do not lean, do not touch", because some of those posts are really, really bad. Obviously, if we get grant money, we'll be doing it spring, that the work is done.
Right, and I love that they'll, they'll do the bidding and the bidding.
So, I am requesting from Bridgell Borough Council that they support us in this effort to obtain these funds, to work with the borough and do it for us. It's a well-used sidewalk, believe me. People come and go there. And people come and go there at night, too, which is why we do not hold meetings here, nothing. But, yeah, we do request borough support.
Are you afraid of your life, Mary?
What?
Are you afraid of your life? Is that why you're meeting there?
Now, I was afraid there today in the middle of the afternoon, at the man walking around saying, "Hi, hi." Thank you very, thank you very much. See you. Come see us.
Eric Schmidt, please.
I just, we spent a lot of time in the parks the last couple months, and, uh, those people making mistakes. I've been at Oak School, and the, there's two different play, play, uh, play gym.
Were you going for the, um, the play gym question?
Yeah, it was plywood.
We just got the place, and there were 1700s.
Alright, cool.
We, I told Ross the part, we're just getting ready to go.
Yeah, I just wanted to, anybody that, that probably won't, like, it's starting to, starting to wear out.
Yeah, we, we had to have the, the representative for the play equipment come in and take a look to see what parts were needed. And then there's also a piece missing where you have the letters or animals where they can put their heads through. We got that, too, so it'll be replaced.
The other two lines, I think, I noticed, uh, the pavilion, I don't know if there is looking yet, but the shingles are in rough shape on the, uh, the way we went to Oak School.
They just got the size of the shingles a few years ago.
Looks like, uh, nobody, the overhang probably wasn't quite enough on that side. Some waters are, some damage was a little bit. And, uh, down in the church, maybe take a look at the picnic tables down there, they're kind of rough, rough shape. You know, like, safety issue in the future.
So, the grant about the parks. That's from a block, right. It has not been finalized, every school looking, waiting to get approval from the proponent, because it's a name, conservation, funding, pool of money that's not provided, so...
Can't just, can't just, no.
No, we have to do exactly what that says. We got the grant, we just haven't gotten the contract for it yet, so we can't do more. They don't want us to start anything until after September, and get it for, for spring anyway. We'll take a look then.
Yeah, it's the public table, by the little kids' play area, by the, the rain.
I, I actually think I had a picture of it, and, uh, we're about to tell the council to take a look at it. So, I can remember, but somebody sent me the picture that I sent.
Alright, that's it. Thanks, Eric.
Paul Frar.
Uh, I just have a couple things I want to ask you guys. The widening of Tertier Street, adding that one lane from New Borough, if it's not, uh, I think I recall hearing that the bossing up is $400,000, $500,000. And what I wanted to ask is, has, have you guys, or has Laurie and Joe made an approach to Upper St. Clair? And maybe that's the part about helping to pay for it?
Yes, they have, and they've said no.
Well, we haven't, we haven't asked about the park.
You haven't asked for it.
But Upper St. Clair was part of the task force.
The task force.
Yeah, the task force, yeah.
Why, when, I asked Brilliant, Felder, and I know the other guy suggested that we originally do a study on, in other words, interview the people that sit there every traffic late at least in the morning or at lunchtime, and it doesn't determine the fact that 75% of those consumed, those people are from Upper St. Clair, Upper Park, and then take it to a higher level? What do you think? You, you give, if you get a bunch of kids, if you have five kids, then each of them, your car, all they do is ask them, "Don't, don't give up."
I either.
That's, that's two hundred grand. That's two hundred grand, you might be able to get them.
That's weird, that's weird. We have asked, we have asked, and they were asked by the task force.
Oh, well, they're all...
They were asked by the task force and the federal offices, what they were going to contribute.
Yeah, they said, "See, right, they said, "This time, we're not going to..."
We're not going to.
"Any financial contribution."
Well, the one that you suggested, the widening of Tertier Street, see what I say there?
I know, I hear you.
Make an extra.
So, is that a formal reply?
Yes.
So, there's a letter now?
There's a formal, that was a formal reply from Adam Benje, um, via Matt Serpalski, and I'm sure he did have a letter.
Yeah, I'd like to see.
I don't know, I, I'm not asking for a letter, I was asking if something had changed since the task force meeting, where there was informality to it, and we got, you know, submitted response at the meeting?
No. The task force made these, these, we had a meeting in South Bay, and a representative, he couldn't commit, he couldn't comment, or he had to go back to Upper St. Clair. And that depended on the, the official.
And all the stakeholders, public and private, and officials and parties that have been at those meetings, you can glean the universe of those who have contributed, and those who have not, because there is a lot, you know, there is documented, the tally of those up looking at, right?
It was a good rating.
In other words, they know how much Bridgell's contribution, commitment is, they know how much Saffa has, they know how much Newberry's, so you can do the math, and you can see the list.
I'll check that.
I would, I would give up, I would give up on that, because I do have a, a big argument to, to this.
I agree with you.
Or related to that. Yeah, I showed you this map, or this drawing, one other time, I feel like. This is obviously, this is Tertier Street, this is the new 79 bridge, I understand that it's a miracle. And, uh, this is a drawing I showed you guys before. It's really essential, uh, that this left turn stacking lane can be put right here in front of the Bethany Church. Because every time someone turns left there, it jams up, and we can't get rid of the traffic in Bridgell. And this, this general plan, by the way, the task force, as accepted, does more for east-west traffic, in other words, for Upper St. Clair, but the traffic, than getting to in front of the bridge rails of the High 79, that benefits us. And some of the features that you guys, please, make sure, isn't the design, the, the gateway's going, you gotta make sure that this radius on this turn, this may more run, and the rate increase, so that it's easier for people coming down, or coming into Bridgell businesses. This left turn stacking lane, usually those lanes are about 10, 12 feet wide. That means this curve has got to be moved over to that extent of a taper 9 to 0 change. And, uh, excuse me, the other thing that I'd recommend is having, when they have the equipment there, the funding application's going to be made, trying to get all these three or four features done at the same time. The radius in front of the church needs to be increased as well, because that's, trucks can still, uh, get on that turn, it's just, I was thinking about the general. But my point is, uh, I, I stopped on, mentioned this to Laurie a couple weeks ago, and I told her that I would go down, bend at the, see that these four features are put in, because if they aren't in, when they build the bridge, you mustn't forget that they, they aren't going to come back two years, five years later, to demand this stuff.
I think there might be a real estate issue, in terms of that, with the turning lane, that left turn lane winding up at Tertier, so.
What do you mean?
Come by the right?
In front of the Bethany Church.
Turn on the left.
No, matter of fact, that's my, that's one of the reasons I'm suggesting this. The, the church, uh, you know, that left, that block office, but the church is frantic. They're not giving enough, long enough to be used for laying across the bridge. And I had the, the Saffa engineer, and myself, manufacturing ministers, nine months ago, to tell them, "That's not the way it is." And, but eventually, eventually, Pendoff, someone's going to put the left turn stacking lane in there. Unless it's done as part of this overall plan, they are going to take it out in front, guard that church, because they'll even choose the way to do it. Since all of this stuff is going on now, just get a price on moving that over 12 feet to a taper of zero. And one other thing, uh, this might be, I, I don't, I contacted the Economic Development Department of Rappel Street, that's correct, of the county. One of the things that you might consider doing now, you guys made central business district Bridgell very attractive by putting the planters in the sidewalks, and the trees, and so on, and when, but all that stuff's blooming, it's very, very attractive. You might, if they do this, it would be a good opportunity for you to extend those planters and the lighting of them down this way. That would give all the people who use this intersection, have a good, give them a chance of getting a rather spectacular view of the Bridgell. Oh, you have a copy of this already. I told you, other fact.
See, big eye.
Have you talked to Abram and all, like?
Well, you know, well, we, last time we were at Pendoff, Pendoff's, I mean, the ancestors made the commitment to move forward with the designers' project, so...
Talk about the bridge.
You know, he, right. Oh, everything, everything, okay? So, you know, they made that commitment, they felt they had funding available to do that work. Right now, it's a process pass. So, you know, we have received feedback from the, they have developed the RFPs, professional services, so, I mean, I would think you see something very good about it. This summer, there's going to be a kickoff meeting to meet with their formal design consultants.
And then we can...
I guess you bring it.
Yeah.
They'll help us, because we're coming here.
That's okay. But then we can bring that to them, because their designers will be incorporating our design, but also the, all their features.
Right.
So, um, they are doing our, without breaking down, so that's the thing.
One thing, uh, I did a very close, I did a very close maintenance along the coast office stand. You first look at, it looks like, see some of its radius, would be very costly, right, here with the stuff going with the coast office, it will...
I'm not going to personally draw it, so.
Alright, thanks, buddy. One last thing. Excuse me, the last, last week, or last month, I was in the fire, about the, uh, spectacular, the fire truck, the fire department had a little thing. I mentioned that I was talking to a couple of the experts at the manufacturer, and I think Joe Klosk was asking me if they were, these are their names, and that's the thing. Yeah, thank you, for your time.
Uh, Mike Heinchuck?
I'm here, uh, representing the families of New York Street. I've been guarding, only had the big flood about three years ago. And I just wanted to see if we're already staying with, uh, in repair, and storm drains, or, like, what if, if anything is being adopted.
We're in the meeting, we're having the second session coming up later tonight, and that's why I was a topic. And I know, I mean, I've talked to others.
Yeah, if I, I think you were out there, folks, on what we've done, and some stuff.
Right, as far as, um, when we had the, when we had the water issue, then we actually didn't know that that storm drain existed there, which meant that it had never been maintained and never been cleaned. So, we then, we sort of cleaned it, put everything up there, camera, you know, see what the condition was of it, you know, we did some sizing of the pipe there, you know, there was some evidence that, that we, the problem was, that it wasn't permitted, the water flowed into it. So, we prepared a cost estimate, and it's something for council to discuss during the second session, to see how it will proceed with. So, I think, and I think one thing, if, if we proceed with the project, we need to get 100% participation of the program, because it would give us an easement for that storm source. So, you know, even though, even though the storm sewer might be there, and it might be an implied easement, I think it's better for us to make things right as we move forward, on a legal standpoint. I don't know, it turned, but...
Any other, any other issue I think that, that we was, was getting to, as well as that, the capacity that is proving, since you've done the cleaning, I'm certain.
Right, we had, it's, that happened in 2014?
13.
13, and since we've been cleaning and maintaining it, we've had some really hard storms, and we've had nothing. So, um, you know, it'll be up to council to make a determination. But I think one of the things is that, when something has never been maintained, because we didn't know it was there, um, that's why the water, right.
And I think, you know, I think one thing, you know, we're setting maintenance, I think maintenance might, may, has to be something that's on a quarterly basis, and even after March storm events, and even in the fall, you might want to be up there, you know, looking at what the vehicles look like, uh, after the leaves fall, make sure there's no leaves in it to plug it up. So, I mean, it's, like, which was kind of unknown, that now we know about, it's something we can take care of.
Is it true that there's a bunch of bands, and depths, and cracks, and...
There's some, I mean, uh, I'd be lying to you if I told you that. But, you know, the one thing there is, when those storm sewers were installed years ago, they didn't have the technology and the laser beams to light the pipes straight. So, a lot of times, you know, they were digging down, they were putting in the pipe in the ground, the best they could. So, there may be some deviations in it, maybe had to pick up the pipe here, there, because they encountered rock, or something like that. So, uh, I would, it's not a perfect system, but it functions.
And in fact, we have it on the schedule, mind, they have made this schedule out of the same, the same period.
Right, we have the Backer charge comes in, um, four times a year, and it's on that, it's on that schedule. And, uh, as I said, you know, council can take a look at it and see, you know, what the options are. We've been trying to maintain it, and no issues, nobody's reported anything to it, so, it's one. On the Backer, we understand that you're concerned.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because I'm sure, because that was put in before you and Upper St. Clair was there. Somebody working on the runoff from Upper St. Clair and everywhere else, and, you know, that's why they can't handle the water.
Well, it is handling water now, it's clean, though. It's over.
Those developments, including the ground in the same area. I think old, does anyone else, Mary's? I remember, right, local makers chant Old Meadows for about the same time. In fact, I think Old Meadows was first.
I don't remember, I don't know, I think you're right, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you, you're welcome, thank you. And, Bill, ladies.
I just wanted to say something about Bill Fousey, but he's a good guy. He's been kind of part of, replaced a guy that, you know, all built. And, uh, the other thing that I had on my mind was, uh, I was coming down Baldwin Street the other day, a little construction actually going on there, police officer in the corner there directing the traffic. He wasn't paying very good attention, but anyway. The car behind, the, there was a car there, and there was a car behind him. He went around that car, and it was a red light, and he stood there, and he just let it go. He didn't say nothing, he didn't do nothing. So, I pointed it out to the officer, I said, "Hey, you just let a car go through a red light." And he told, he told me, "Shut up." So, I told, I told him, I said, "Well, if I wasn't from this town, I, that's the impression I would have the police around here." And I know better, I know that the police around here are good, good guys. I don't know whether he was having a bad day, or he was missing a game that night, but you don't talk to anyone like that. You don't say, "Shut up" to anybody. I don't care who it is. The mayor, someone from out of town, fellow resident, you just don't do stuff like that.
I would disagree, sometimes we have to put people in their place.
Well...
And Joel, I've dealt with you in the past, I know how you can be at times. Now, to further this a little more, we don't discuss personnel issues on public forum. If you have a problem, something one of my officers done, you come and see me about it.
I didn't even think, so, I'm, I'm just telling you that if I said something to him in a derivative way, I would expect someone to say, "Shut up" to me. But I said, "Hey, buddy." I mean, I'm just thinking, there's an accident happening right there. You don't have lights, you know how many times people get hit there, right?
Was he there directing traffic for them?
He was there pressing buttons at the light, that's what he was doing.
For the construction crew?
Yes.
Okay, and maybe there was a reason he let the car go through the road.
He didn't let no car go through, he didn't know who cars went through.
I just thought you said a car went through it.
A car went through it, but he, he was standing there, unaware, to my leisure. Now, his story might differ from mine, however, I mean, I'm just looking at it this way, Chen. You want to pull me in my place, it's fine. But if it's someone from out of town, that's the first impression you're getting in Bridgell.
I understand where you're coming from.
You're the first one in defense, right there.
Right.
Not each people, you are, you represent us, that's the way it is. But, and then, one more thing, as far as the traffic coming down my road, it's worse than what they counted, and it's not local traffic, I can tell you everything now. I had to look, come out of my house in the morning. I mean, almost get hit, with all this hang. They either need to decrease that speed limit where, where, they have the 50 mile an hour speed limit, where the speed bumps are, people weren't following that, the speed limit for that.
Never stopped the stop sensors.
No. And what's happening is, like, my house sits on the road, I bought that house, it's my house, okay? But, the, the problem is, the road is not wide enough right there for that speed limit. You can't have cars zipping by there 25, 30 mile an hour. Because 25, to somebody, means 30. 15 means 20, so...
One thing I will comment on that is, they have been closing that road a lot more lately, closing the main street connection a lot more. So, you may get people who plan on coming down that way, turning around one way, flying down the other.
Well, let me tell you another thing. 12:30 mark of the morning, I hear big rigs coming down my street. I mean, real big rigs coming down my streets. The bulldozers on it, and...
Yeah, they're sitting up there, everybody, so. It's not every night, right?
It's, it's pretty, like, really early in the morning, or midnight. I'm not so concerned about them coming up, I'm just concerned about them hitting my vehicles.
I think it's disturbing that there's signs up, and there's a good faith agreement between commuters, that's what they're going to have, in my experience, I've seen them follow them.
I, I know that your guys' hands are tied, I understand that. I'm just telling you, I'm just venting my concerns, that's all. And, if you tell me to sit down, I'm not agreeing. Just saying. I said my piece. Peace be with you.
Alright.
I still love you, Chen. I love you, too, Joel.
He told you, you screamed it.
Uh, minutes. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the minutes of May 6, 2016, such a meeting, as submitted.
So moved.
Exactly, Phil Henry, yeah.
Call it in favor.
Alright. Motion carries. Motion of the Borough Council regarding the minutes of May 9, 2016, that were meeting, as submitted.
So moved. Second, Phil Henry, same.
Oh, cool. Bruce, how are you doing, Phil Henry? As of the favor. I'll, 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 motion carries. Ordinance number 990, Bush and the Borough Council regarding the ordinance number 990, ordinance of the Borough Council, Borough Council, uh, Bridgell commending the Borough Bridgell Code of Ordinances, Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Part Two, Traffic Regulations 15-211.1, Intersections established specifically to create a stop intersection for vehicles traveling in a northerly direction along Main Street, where Main Street intersects, intersects Presomintive Drive, and also to create a stop intersection at September terms for vehicles traveling in a southeasterly direction along Main Street, where Main Street intersects Presomintive Drive. The ordinances have been duly categorized.
So moved.
So moved.
Sir.
Phil Henderson and Neil Lyons. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed?
I just want to comment, just, she could, is that adequate post-up? Are you, you feel comfortable with what's up there?
Two signs are posted together. I'm seeing it as well. We know there was question whenever the first stop sign went up, which was the one coming from Upper St. Clair, cross over the line, that that sign may be moved once they decided what they were doing with the shrubbery and the landscaping that was up there. Because I think they put the sign temporarily on a telephone pole. So, the only question would be, if you want to move that sign further back toward the border with St. Clair, but, you know, we would have to go up there and take a look at what type of mind view you would have if you're stopped closer to St. Clair. I don't know if you're going to be able to see up that event though. So, that was the only question that came up, was the exact location of that sign.
And then, before you came in, there was some feedback from some of the neighbors of new signs have been posted. Not a bang.
Can't do any...
I know. Yeah. So, we're happy that this is our idea. You're down.
With Joel up there, he can yell at everybody.
Hey, get that 200,000 on the street there. What's up, Joe?
Motion did pass, by the way.
All right.
Change Order 1, Increase in Quantity Firehole Road Payment Restoration. Motion of the Borough Council Regarding Change Order Number 1, Change Order for the Payment Restoration of Firehole Road, With Quantity Increase of the Original Bid, uh, five hundred square yards to nine hundred, nine hundred eighty-six point two three square yards due to increase in slated repair areas since the project was originally taken.
So moved.
All right. All those opposed?
Motion carries. Uh, one more, both understanding Algen County Conservation, Motion of the Borough Council Regarding the Memorandum of Understanding Between Algen County Conservation and the Brooklyn Borough, Agreement Acknowledging That ACCP and Borough, Brooklyn Borough Have Common Areas of Work and Required Communication in Support of Each of These Parties to the Other Party. This Memorandum will understand will serve as a foundation for the cooperation and mutually beneficial working relationship between the District and Algen, Brooklyn Borough.
So moved.
Bruce Calorucci. All second. And Phil Henderson.
Question.
Yes, sir.
There is one option here, I'd like the manager to clarify. I need to notice and refer to the district. There are two options. One is for us to handle from 5,000 square feet up to, up to an acre, and the other is to have them review all applications. I'm curious, obviously, clearly, they have the expertise. They have the ability. But on these smaller plans, are we creating another layer of difficulty for, for one acre lots that need to do a small ENS plan, that now they've got another step in their development criteria? Clearly, one acre or more, definitely, you know, I understand, they have the experience. Would we be better off keeping the one acre under one acre? Is that something you might feel comfortable with? I don't, I don't know what's involved, and that's why we're putting it on the table.
Well, I think, you know, the discussion we had, Pat, was, you know, with the MS4 requirements that are, that are, that we have to meet, you know, they're asking that, you know, pollution given to the waterways. And, you know, the likelihood of us having a paper more development in the Brooklyn Borough is probably slim in these days. So, anything that we do is probably to redevelop that piece of property. So, having the backing and the power of the Algen County Conservation District to back us up in here with these smaller areas can only help us improve the requirements of the MS4.
I'm, I understand what you're saying.
Because now, when somebody comes in that needs to do a small driveway or something
that's relatively, and again, I know we're 5,000 square feet, so it gets, because under 5,000...
It's a 70 foot square. That's an equal square.
And we really don't have...
And that's the area, that's the disturbance area right on the property, so...
I think, I think, Pat, you're not going to have any issues with driveways, and I think it would only be when someone wants to put an addition on to a home, it's where it'd get more of those, because, you know, like, the likelihood of that happening is simple. It has probably a handful of additions, probably less than that, not that big, so...
How many permission we need, have we issued? Or would they, how many referrals we're talking about?
Not that big.
And...
God, I'm sorry, do you...
Are we in a situation where, you know, even though small number we're doing, we want to send the home over to...
Well, we would do that. We would do that for the smart, just a review. And that would happen during the process anyway, during all the other reviews. And like we said, it would have to be a pretty, a large addition or a large, larger development. And it's, after going through a four hour audit, which is on my, on my report with the DEP and the MS4 obligations, it's going to get very complicated. And this is one thing that probably, if they will be checking on that J more, and they're going to be checking on everything that they're doing, so...
Yeah. I mean, there's many aspects of the agreement that help get our ticket, so to speak, with many of these were even more sizable. And I think we're talking about, it's not just a acre over, you're correcting the module. It hasn't changed the substance from two, but you've changed the computer is. And this is not under storm law, being in management control, which are permanent. The NPS, this is the construction space, ENS, ENS enforced, you know, a lot of the...
Just to make sure they're doing things right.
Some have gone either way on that. I mean, it's either a lovely, you know, code, boring, but if you check off the other blocks up until that...
That's exactly what I was pointing out. You know, if we go with the other option, you would end up with the building inspector, I don't know who you talked to, building inspectors?
It would be a building inspector job.
Yeah. Do they have the expertise in the, in the smaller projects?
Smaller projects here that have that are basically, probably some soft soft being put in, that's about it. You know, instead of we have another layer of checking and satisfying requirements of the UEP, I think it's advantageous to have them on board to help us.
As you just said, it's another layer of the draft.
I understand, that's another layer, but it should, it should not complicate things significantly for a small addition of all of them.
There is a motion. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Washington Avenue Sidewalk Replacement Area Under Relewing and Lake Theory Bridge and Adjacent Sidewalk. Motion of the Borough Council Authorizing Engineer, Engineer Sites to Prepare Transportation for the Washington Avenue Sidewalk Replacement Period Under Relewing and Lake Theory Bridge and Adjacent Sidewalk in the Railroad Rightway, Authorizing the Management to Offer to Advertise the Same. The total cost of the project estimated by engineer sites is $47,460, which just includes both sides of Washington Avenue with the sidewalk located in the reeling and Lake Theory right away.
So, if you did want to follow this, would you ever be against giving it to us?
Oh, no. They don't care what we do to it. They just, they're just telling me that they will do nothing. And as far as whatever we want to do, you know, it's fine.
We don't do the work, I mean, come back to us, because we want this changed.
They just said that they have too, too many of these areas. Their staff is cut down, they don't have people to do it, they don't have the, just like, it's the same example as, like, the rural station street there, where the lower ties and things that are left and that type of thing. They sent some people up, they cleaned up a little bit, and getting some things in, they left things in the right way. It's almost impossible to deal with them, but as far as us wanting to do something, they're all for that. Just like the trestle, us hanging the trestle, us fixing the walls of the trestle, they're all for that too, but they say, you know...
And in terms of sidewalk maintenance, that's kind of, you know, we have these old authorities like everybody else that are chasing property and community and everybody else. These, the railroad rightways, it's all over the country, they're kind of, you know, considering they are kind of different.
Well, letter is, so, you can't think of us doing anything.
Well, and part of the reason behind that is because they're really using smart property and shit in there.
And it's just like, it's there, it's nobody's property. In the meantime, you have people that are walking, you know, onto the roadway in the dark, in the rain and the ice because water is there, so it's a dangerous situation. I mean, we could try to lose their property, we could try, we cited them, you know, we sent a citation to them as far as property maintenance goes, and we saw that we got that one. So, you know, there's any out there to try to get our money back later, but I think...
It's our responsibility.
Right now, for our residents, yeah.
This is, how often is it respected, is it safe?
It's safe. They actually, we just redid the decking about six months ago. So, that's, and, and they did come if they could, if you noticed those little plastic tops there to try to stop some of the water. But I, yeah, I stood down there with them and, you know, we took a look at it, stood in the water, pretty much, said...
Did you get socks wet? Hopefully, you got your socks wet.
Top pendant, and, you know, pendant's not, it's the sidewalk and the road right, so...
Is it something?
Um, yeah, it was. But they, they were, you know, they actually were going to help us.
I know.
Yes. If we had an ADA compliant project with the Washington Avenue Reconstruction, but because all of our sidewalks were already done and they were already ADA compliant, they were going to try to put that on the back end of it and help us. But then, there's nothing ADA compliant that they have to do up there. So, then they said, you know what, we can't help you with it. So, I was hopeful all last year that they were going to come in and help, and that the 12th hour, there's no ADA project, so this one is...
Um, I'll relate to over some period of time, have your legal opinion regarding what the PUC was, Public Building Commission. I don't know if this is a maintenance issue that the PUC may have overstayed over. I'm not expecting to have any issue this evening. I'm not going to be putting it on the table, but I'd be like to, I'd take a look at it over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, sure. Yes, I'm watching.
Thanks, Mike. The, the second item regarding the building project, the, there is a very, there's an area where there's no sidewalk left at all. Okay? And then, there's an area where the sidewalk is in disrepair. I don't know how, I, I can't in my mind's eye figure out how far back this scope is.
This goes from, from, if you're, if you're coming from Great Southern Charlotte Center and you're driving toward us, okay? We started the railroad trestle on the right hand side because the, the property owner actually fixed his sidewalk to that. So, it's all of that over there and then all up into the farm, well, just because that's all railroad.
All the way to the old railroad building?
Yes.
So, the old railroad building, not, it stops there?
It's on the other side, it's the trestle area, and then it comes through, and the entrance of DNC Supplies, all of their sides, everything, that's all railroad, right, so it stops at, it used to be the old DNA or spin major, you know, but it stops there on that side.
So, would you go in front of the old, what you're saying, the DNA, in front of the...
No, we're stopped, it stops, the DNC Supply entrance, that's where, that's where, that's where it, it stops at the entrance there.
So, it stops before the entrance? The entrance is over there.
Has it?
No, it doesn't.
Well, you know what? They just did the, the...
They did, they did a store there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they did, yeah. So, that, did a little stop right there. The rest is, we depose, don't have...
Right. Here's my thought, is that, I don't know how much each side is, but it's the Donwall, it's the, it's the Donwall side, and not in front of his property, that's really the difficult area.
Yeah.
It seems fairly clear that this community is going to pay for this. If we might fight, we'll...
It gets to bed, so we'll get to it.
Yeah. If we might fight, no, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if council wants to do it, and clearly, you're open to the railroad to participate anyway, but the odds of them soliciting a journey can come up as something brilliant.
And that's what we said, the last month came, she was going to formally, inside down, and we'd be like, Larry, we said...
Yeah. My just thought is, that maybe just doing the one side might be sufficient.
Well, I don't, to take a ride up to the DOT place up there, or behind the high school, approach someone up there from the Department of Transportation of Pennsylvania, seems they can get us in touch with someone who's on a committee in Washington DC, representative, and see if they can come on and take a look at it. Because if we put pressure on them that way, they're going to say, "This shouldn't be like that."
But because...
No, because, no, if you keep up there and get their face, they're going to do something about it. It's wrong.
We said, you...
They were... I mean, we could actually get, you know, have a state representative try, try to help us retrieve something, but the question right now is how much we really believe it is...
Yeah, that's... I am, to be very clear, I am entirely supportive of the Borough taking this action and repairing the sidewalk. I'm supportive of that.
Yeah. And then trying to recover, trying to...
Then trying to get it back.
Anybody make a motion?
So moved.
Also, Joel Henderson, Bruce Calorucci. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Billless. Motion of the Borough Council Regarding June 2016 Billless. Bruce Calorucci. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Payrolls. Motion of the Borough Council Regarding Payrolls, June 17, 24, July 1, and 8, 2016. Bruce Calorucci. All second. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Once the report's motion to accept and pay any commission due to the May 2016 Billless Tax Select Report. Bruce Calorucci. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Motion to accept the April 2016 Financial Report. Bruce Calorucci. Sorry. Bruce Calorucci. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. No report for the lease. And motion to accept the May 2016 Zone...
So moved.
Phil Henderson and Joe Plasse. All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Committee of Mission Administration Report for Finance. Joe?
Another report about finances, but I would like to have the finance committee in the next week or so to discuss a few items in addition to the super. Stay tuned, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you to have a discussion.
Thank you very much. Parks and Rec.
Can I report? Public Works members. Go report. Okay. The, the, I'd like to, you, you, Joe, and you, in regards to... and Joe, and you, in regards to, 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 to do that, Chris Sciaricci, so, you're full of that.
Public Safety, Bill Henderson?
Uh, you know, one thing, like, Fire Chief Chili Oak, where we're dealing with some of fire agents around town, and he brought my intentions, there are a couple that are obscured by shrubbery and would make it very difficult.
They're not visible.
Yeah, they're, they're very hard to...
They're literally not visible.
So, what we'd like, I don't even know if they have any books, one of them's at the bottom of Coolidge, the property there, and one's up in Pennsylvania, I don't know if that works.
146th and L.A., and I forget the house number, but, fact it on the block, and very hard to find.
So, I'm thinking if we could send a letter out to those property owners, and, and, some of the other, we've talked, some of the other communities have like a three-foot radius around, so I'm not sure if that's what we're looking for.
We have it, yeah.
Yeah, but, if there's, I mean, if there isn't something, I'd like to send a letter to residents, to see if they're listening.
So, Washington, Coolidge, 146th, Pennsylvania?
Yes.
Do you have, do you know where they are?
Those are the two. Everything else is really good.
All right. That's it, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Flag Day tomorrow, at seven o'clock at the memorial, it's a very nice memorial, if you're planning on attending, I should drive for about 10 minutes before seven, the entire program takes about 15, 20 minutes, it's very nice, and I would encourage you to attend. We, uh, do, all do, yes. It's stand-up for a community, very nice, and I appreciate that, and it's very welcome. So, that, that concludes it.
Police Chief, Jackie?
No report.
Sister?
Yeah, you have a written report, and the only thing on that is, I would recommend you attend the motion to extend the, extension, please, of draw, draw pension discussions in the 16th, and say for me, in all this part, 90, we're not, they, you know, go through these, and...
Need a motion for it? Say that?
If you, yeah, it's, it's, and it's not an agenda item, I would say you could, but...
Bill Henderson and Chris Sciaricci to extend the draw pension. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Engineer, just a second.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things here, favor, maintenance program is well underway, we've got Hardy and Ford Street done last week, and they were milling Indian Street tomorrow between Terrace and Lock Street, so, we've had a communication with Soul Water Supply, let them know the dance of the world is current, so we're trying to keep our operation going there. Bowery Hill Road will give contact with T. Robinson, get them on the schedule for that work, if you all could change work for. Washington Avenue, waterway replacement, sanitary sewer repair done, and light construction is significantly done with the paving work out there on Washington Avenue, except for some concrete restoration needs to be done. Uh, the Washington change development, Lori and I met with Dr. Roy at Lynn Fores last Tuesday to discuss the condition of that site there at the corner of James and Washington Street, and told him that he needs to get the foundation cleaned up, a backfill, placed topsoil, and sea block, make it, make it look nice, and told him he needs to be a good neighbor to his, to Virgil Borough, it'll go a long way. I got an email there this afternoon, and it said, he's going to have somebody in there doing it this weekend, and I, so, sad to say, I told him, pleased the way, until I have a community day.
After all this.
After all this, so, um, okay.
I almost thought, oh, jeez, do it, we just, yeah, stand and fight.
And, um, the Hawthorne Park, as I said earlier, we're still waiting for the DCNR to get the money from the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the National Park Service, that probably won't come until the fall, so anticipating a fall design and bidding, so we can have a spring 2017 start, and then, as, for, said before, Pendott is, about the funding there to start the design work, we're still waiting for the final funding for construction, so hopefully by, let's say, September, hopefully they'll have a consultant on line to get the design bid, so I...
Thank you very much. A couple of questions for you here. Joe, also, for Bowery Hill Road, are you planning on putting some, some whole patch in there to fix the bunks of that, and, uh, plus, yeah?
Yeah, I'm working towards a whole patch.
Yeah, they've been trying to watch it, so, I, I wasn't out since, since the weekend, so if there's some areas, I'll, yeah.
Not, not anything in particular, just wanted to make sure that, that's what you're doing, right?
Yes, yes.
The broader issue here is, that I see with Bowery Hill Road is the same one we've seen for a year and a half now. The road is deteriorating, Joe, the, the explanation of water, you know, water damage or water conducting, it is, seems reasonable, but there's not a great deal of evidence to support that?
Well, if, you know, if, you know, the winter of 2014, 15, we have a good deal of water come down in there and cause damage to the road. So, we've anticipated that for the future, we've got a number of trades going to go on both sides of the road, tie it back into the endless to capture some surface water, we've got a big cross-section going in there with some heavy number of stones, choke them with some fines to support the way that the traffic that travels on Bowery Hill, so, I think we're pretty well covered on addressing the repairs.
I'm following, it's remembered that this was done approximately four years ago.
But keep in mind, when we had the work done, the milliary surfaced the road, we did not have a water problem, okay? Something has hap, something happened, okay, I don't know what it is unless you want to spend thousands of dollars to a geotechnical investigation as to where the water's coming from, okay?
That's exactly what I'm putting on the table. We're going to spend $120,000 to repair it again. We repaired it four or five years ago, we're going to spend $120,000 to repair it again, we don't know why it's failing, or why, why it failed there. And I, and I appreciate your, your straightforwardness on this, Joe, and it made you worthwhile to consider spending thousands of dollars, even tens of thousands of dollars, to make sure...
It's a little tough to figure out, I mean, if you're looking, trying to... We, we spent $15,000, $30,000, just to drill it.
To figure out where...
Figure out where it was at. It's still not right.
And one of the suggestions was, instead of drilling it, and take a backhoe down there, scoop down, and see what you can, see what you've got, and then rehole patch it. Now, I, you know, I bring this up at this meeting because you're trying to schedule this for September, is what you're...
We're sooner.
Or, so, 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 there's not much time if council, if, for the engineer or council to really take a look and determine what the cause is. Now, you know, if everybody thinks, "If we figured it out," fine, but...
It's called overweight vehicles that go on that, or...
For years, there were overweight vehicles. There's not much that's changed in the pattern of that road, road deteriorated over a number of years, was repaid for, you know, approximately three or four years ago, it's deteriorated very quickly considering, and if it is the amount of traffic toll, if it is heavy overweight vehicles, then we better address that issue, because they're not changing. Those same vehicles are going to be coming for the next three years, and I don't know that we want to spend 120-some thousand dollars every three or four years to redo Bowery Hill Road. I'm just, I'm putting it out there for everyone to think about it, this, you know, I don't think that there's any kind of a motion that you can do at this point, but I am putting it out for both the council and the engineer to think about. Okay? So, um, so, yeah, so, thank you.
Fire Chief, Chili Oak?
Thanks, Mr. President. Not much, other than we, we'll see everybody at Community Day, Dr. Hardy partying for the concert, had going on that night. The only thing is, this past weekend, we participated in a drill with Mount Lebanon and North Strabane, at one of our high-rises, learning new techniques for high-rise fires, and we were stuck to the top, so it was very interesting, I was up there with it. And then, other than we've been, I'm sure by this scene, a lot of departments are really using our eyes, and are really gratefully appreciative of getting a chance to really train in there and do things, so it's, they, they do want me to extend a thank you to all you up there for giving us the okay to do that, it's been very positive. That's all I got. What's that?
The dogs were back last week.
Yeah, and the canines, the police have been using it too, I mean, so it's really very fortunate we don't get to do that that often. Thanks.
All right, you're welcome. Dan's on here with South Bridge, Becky's on here with Library.
Um, I provided a report, does anyone have any questions? So, you know what I'm doing?
All of you here, this?
This is, I have two things, please, sir. Uh, Virgil Athletic Association asked me to let the community know that we are having movie night for the kids that aren't going to the, the concert at the fire department, so we'll have a movie night down on Community Night, Community Day, at dusk, it'll be a kid-friendly movie that we'll have in Wright Field. Uh, and the Southwest Communities Chamber, it asked me to remind everybody that their annual, 750 tickets only sold for the Ford Mustang or cash, their fundraiser is ending up, I think, in a couple of weeks, so, if you want a ticket, the Brentwood Bank office down the road is also selling them, if the Chamber office is not open at that time. And they're looking for, I think, two more foursomes for their golf outing for this Friday. So, if anybody, it's kind of a last, last call, if anybody wants to go to a nice golf outing, it's, see them out.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, the executive session. If you can adjourn, we're not, not this ready to be actioned. All right. Second to adjourn? Second. Bill, all those in favor? Back, we'll debate.